We are delighted to welcome bond counsel. They work closely with Mr. Comsa, Mr. Dimitri, Ms. Amanda Van Dusen, and Tom Colas. I will share with you trustees, not only are they the best bond counsel in Michigan, they're among the best in the country. And I'm very proud to say that every millage and endeavor that we've done together, we've had success on, and yet we never take this work for granted. So they're going to work with you through the process. And they are joined by Paul Stouter, who is our financial advisor. And trustees, that, Mr. Dimitri, why don't you share a little bit about what the financial advisor does, just a little bit? Because I think we understand bond counsel, but...
They do a lot of things, but on the bond side, they do all the calculations. They'll figure out what the millage will be. They'll help us with when we actually go to sell the bonds. They send out the bids for underwriters. They evaluate them. We work together on when we get rating calls from rating agencies. So they do multiple of things with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. And they've both been working with the school district in multiple centuries.
Well, good evening, Dr. Swift. Thank you for those kind words. My name is Tom Colas with Miller Canfield. We have the pleasure of serving as bond counsel to the school district. So we're going to walk through the bonding process from start to finish. We'll start with some real basics as to what bonds are, then we'll get into the details as to how the bond issue was structured. Paul will get into some details on the actual calculations, how millage is impacted. And then we'll ultimately work our way through how bonds are sold, how we choose the method of sale, and then ultimately, when bond proceeds are received, what's the district's responsibility for spending those proceeds? And ultimately, once the buildings are financed, what ongoing responsibilities you have throughout the life of the bond issue? Because those will continue on even past construction of the facilities. So we're going to start with the very basics on what is a bond? It is in its simplest form, the most districts borrow for capital purposes using bonds. And bond proceeds can only be used for capital purposes. There are other types of borrowings that districts are authorized to enter into for operating costs, but they're not bonds. There might be state aid notes or the like, but bonds fundamentally are used for financing capital improvements. In its very simplest form, a bond is a security that's issued by the district that actually is a repayment obligation for borrowed funds. So the bond will actually say, you know, promises to pay to the bondholder, certain amount of funds on certain dates at a certain interest rate. And the bond will actually set forth the form of security that supports that bond issue. So how does a bond proposal differ from a millage proposal? So obviously, the district has both. We have existing bonds outstanding in millages. When we go to the voters and ask for a proposal, a bond proposal actually asks the authority to issue a certain dollar amount. So we're asking for the authority to issue bonds in a certain dollar amount for a particular purpose. So as we're going to dissect the actual bond proposal in a couple of slides, a man will take us through that. But fundamentally, we're asking for an amount of bonds to be issued to finance certain projects. With that comes the ability to levy a separate tax that is not limited as to rate or amount. So contrast that with a millage where we're going to the electors and we're asking them, shall we be authorized to levy a millage in a certain dollar, in a certain millage amount for a particular purpose? A sinking fund's a perfect example. We use the sinking fund for capital purposes, but we ask for a specific millage amount to be levied. And we utilize those proceeds to pay for capital items as we go forward. The bonds will, the millage amount that's associated with a bond issue is reset every year. And the calculation, we'll talk about this in a little bit more detail, but fundamentally, the calculation is, what do I owe in the next year to my bondholders on debt service? Then how many mills do I need to generate pursuant to that tax to cover that debt service for that next year? So that's a simple calculation of how much is owed, dollar amount, and then what's my taxable value? So how many mills do I generate through that taxable value to generate those dollars? So as the taxable value fluctuates over the years, as the amount of money that's owed to bondholders fluctuates over the years, that millage amount fluctuates also. Now, we estimate currently what we think that millage amount's going to be, and a man will talk through what we put into the bond proposal as to what we think millage amounts are going to be. But we won't fundamentally know that until we actually sell each series of bonds. And each year, you won't know how much millage you're going to levy until we know exactly what the taxable value is. So that's one thing is, now, and those millages are not subject to any headly rollback, because it's each year, we're just going to look and see, how much do we owe, what do we need to levy to generate that dollar amount for the next year? As opposed to a millage where we're asking for a specific millage amount. That will be subject to headly rollbacks, so that can be reduced over time. So any of the millages that the district is authorized, our operating millage, our sinking fund millages, are subject to those rollbacks. And again, and they're only, we've asked for a limit on a number of mills, and then your authority gets reduced every time we have a headly rollback. So the school district is a governmental entity. It gets its authority to issue bonds, to borrow funds from state law. So it needs to have express state law that authorizes it to be able to do something. Unlike a private company or individuals where you can do anything unless state law says you can't do something. So our authority, when we look to see what the district can do, you know, the power to undertake a particular project, to borrow to finance the project, it's, you know, how we're going to pay it back, what form it should take, that all comes from state law. We're looking to state law to give us direction as to how can we fit what the district desires to do within the framework that's set out in state law for us to be able to do so. And there are limits as to how much can be borrowed for capital purposes from bond issues. For school districts, the limit is 15% of the state equalized value. State equalized value is roughly half of the true cash value of the total properties within the district. And if you look at what the actual, your school district's limit is, 15% of the latest state equalized value is about $1.8 billion in totality. Now, there are certain bonds that are subject to it and certain bonds that are not subject to that debt limit. The district has about $40 million worth of bonds that are currently subject to that $1.8 billion debt limit, leaving a large debt margin, legal ability to issue debt of just under, just over $1.8 billion, 116. So again, that, you have the authority under state law. That doesn't mean that you'd necessarily want to desire to use all that, because obviously associated with that comes taxes to support that and the need for those projects. And the form does matter in this circumstance. So, you know, we always talk about form over substance. Form matters particularly in bonding, because we can't just, we being the school district, just can't go to the bank and get a loan, like a traditional, let's go there, get a loan, where they're going to say, okay, great, we'll pull a loan document off the shelves and mortgage. You don't have authority to do that. We issue bonds to support our debt issuances for our capital projects. And again, it functions similarly to a loan, because we're going to receive proceeds on day one, and then we're going to start repaying those with an interest that'll accrue over Talk a little bit about the legal framework. These are the different layers that really, that we look to when we're looking at what authority the district has to issue debt. It starts with the Constitution, then it gets more detailed into the School Code, and we'll dive a little, we'll dive in particular with respect to the one section that really highlights bond issuances for projects. The Revised Municipal Finance Act. So this is a general overlaying statute that is basically all municipalities and school districts are subject to. So in addition to restrictions in the School Code, the Revised Municipal Finance Act has additional restrictions and authorization to issue bonds in the structure for which we can issue them within. Election law, of course, comes into play when we're voting our bond issues. We need to be, we're subject to election law and all the requirements associated with it, on proper notices and timing. And of course, Michigan Campaign Finance Act. So when we're talking about what the cans, what we can and cannot do in connection with elections, that's where the Campaign Finance Act comes into place. And then ultimately, these bonds are issued, these securities are issued out into the bond market. So we will, there will be aspects of federal securities law that we're going to talk about. And ultimately, the bonds are exempt from federal and state income tax. So the bondholders are expecting that their interest will be exempt from federal and state income tax. So there are, of course, tax law restrictions as to how we utilize our bond proceeds and how we utilize our facilities that will impact the tax exempt status of the bonds.
To give you another voice to hear, thank you for the opportunity to be with you this evening. I want to go back a second on those campaign finance laws. The materials that Dr. Swift was reminding you about were all subject to the campaign finance laws, and it was very important, we worked closely with the district to make sure that the information that the district was distributing and using district resources to prepare was purely informational and not engaging in advocacy, because that is a prohibition. So just one additional note about that. But now, Tom indicated all those different statutes that apply to the issuance of bonds by the school district, and the most important one in your case is the School Code. And what's up on the screen right now is part of Section 1351A of the School Code, which talks about permitted uses of school proceeds, of school bond proceeds. It is not enough where the uses of those school proceeds, those bond proceeds, to be for capital purposes. They have to be for certain types of capital purposes. Now, and we will talk about the ballot in just a moment, but you'll see highlighted, and you'll be happy to know I'm not going to read this whole thing, but, which talks about purchasing, erecting, equipping, remodeling. We also say equipping or re-equipping, because in the states' minds, when you're buying new equipment, you are equipping. If you are replacing old equipment, that's re-equipping. The same thing with furnishing and refurnishing. And the key thing for bringing all of this up here is that you need to have in your ballot permission to do whatever you want to do. And we key off the words in this section of the School Code to make sure that we're picking up, in your case, the broadest possible authorization. One footnote to that is the technology equipment, and that's particularly restricted, more restrictive than the definition of capital improvement would be. In this case, technology equipment really refers to student devices, any form of technology that students use, including the printers and the screens and whatnot. And the state law does not allow you to finance upgrades to that equipment and does not allow you to finance off-the-shelf application software or maintenance. Maintenance isn't a capital expenditure anyway, but it is more restrictive than in other states in terms of how you can use bond proceeds. So a little bit of a summary, you can do, you can do construction, remodeling, capital improvements, purchases. You may not do a repair. And this is a distinction from the sinking fund. Sinking fund dollars may be used for repairs. Repairs are curative, are preventative, preventative in the sense that they keep facilities you've got in close to their original condition. Sinking fund, yes, not for a bond issue. And you cannot do, I'm sorry, repairs are curative. They restore something to its original condition. And you may not do maintenance, which is preventative. And you may not use either sinking fund proceeds or bond proceeds for maintenance. The example that I would like to get, I usually give, are either roofs or parking lots. If you have a roof, you keep it cleaned off, that's maintenance. If it has a leak, you could patch it, that's a repair. But it's capital if you replace it, part of it or all of it. Parking lot, same kind of thing. If you reseal it, it's maintenance. If you patch it, it's repair. If you put a whole new layer on top or expand it or replace a whole section, that's capital. And I've covered the technology definition. The other thing to think about, this is series by series of bonds, is that the useful life of the assets that you want to improve, of the improvements you want to make, has to roughly equal the length of the bond issue, or be longer than the use, than the bond issue will be outstanding. So if you wanted to pack a whole lot of technology or buses into one series of bonds, that's going to reduce the average life of the average useful life of those improvements, and your bond issue would have to be shorter. If you have a lot of new buildings, then, or additions or improvements that extend the life of buildings, then you're going to be able to have a longer bond issue. And we measure this with each series of the bonds, not all the bonds for that proposal. Now, for a moment, I just want to, this is the ballot, and if it's hard to read, I apologize, but I thought we ought to go back to what Tom talked about a moment ago. I think I've got a, do I have it? That one's better. Thank you. There we go. So at the very top, you'll see what we talked about at the beginning. It says, "Shall the public schools of the city of Ann Arbor borrow the principal sum of not to exceed $1 billion?" That's the question. Shall you, are you authorized to borrow the money? It's not authorizing particular debt millage rate. And use its general obligation unlimited issue. It's a general obligation unlimited tax bonds. That's the, the unlimited tax is what carries with it, the obligation to levy the debt millage for the purpose of defraying the cost of all of these improvements that are shown in the books. And because of an issue of this size and giving all the objectives of the school district, we put, I would say, just about anything that that Section 1351A permits into this ballot, emphasizing the important themes that Dr. Swift talked about earlier, including the safety and security improvements and the sustainability improvements. But we had to hit all these different key buzzwords. If they weren't there, you're not going to be able to do them. It includes the acquisition of land. It includes the technology equipment. It includes all kinds of site developments, including athletic facilities and playgrounds. And so the key thing is that, as broad as the state law is, this is another definition of what you can do. If it's not here, you can't do it. Then on top of that, there's this, and that's the end of the question. But then you've got this required paragraph below it. And while the first sentence in that second, that paragraph is not required, that's the one that gives you the context. That's the projection that the debt millage expected or projected to be needed to retire the bonds will not go above 4.1. As Tom said, this is an unlimited tax bond, so that debt millage rate will fluctuate depending on the interest rates at the time you issue the bonds and what your tax base looks like at that time. Now, the two sentences below that were required by state law. The estimated levy in 2020 is 1.99 mills. That's because you've got old bonds coming off that you're paying down, and this will plug some of that gap, but also start, will be part of the increase, the overall increase over the life of the issue. And then I, I'm not sure that this other number means very much, but we're required to include the simple average millage rate, which will be 3.49 mills. Then a very important sentence is the last one in that paragraph, which says that each series of bonds will be issued and payable over 22 years at the most. And then there's a sentence at the very bottom, which is not required, but every school district in the state uses it, and the state loves it when you put it in, which is that bond proceeds, and this all also happens to be true as a matter of law, that you cannot use bond proceeds to pay operating costs or maintenance or repair costs. So, ah, I'm not responsible for the size of those numbers. Paul's going to talk about that.
Thanks, Amanda. And I'm not actually going to read these numbers to you or expect you to really see what they are. But this is how we go about the process of making determinations of some of those numbers that go into the ballot, but also helping your administration to understand what the magnitude of the, any borrowing amount is. So while you were going through the facility assessment process and costing the whole amount of the projects down the road, we were working with Marius and running some models to determine what the potential millage impact was. So this is, this is actually the type of model that was developed to determine that the 4.1 mills was the right number for this size project. So you have your existing bonds in place that we have built into the model. $140 million was the first series, so we layer that loan in along with the additional loans in the years ahead to determine what the overall bond payments were likely to be. And a couple of things that impact or affect this projection in particular are how much you intend to borrow, what the interest rate is expected to be on that borrowing, as well as what the tax base is likely to look like in the years ahead. In all cases, we try to be conservative with those numbers, using a little bit higher interest rates than the market is giving us right now, providing for a tax base growth in the future that is conservative relative to your history. Last couple of years, the district tax base has grown at a rate of around 5%, even in excess of 5%. Over the last five years, you've been in the 3.5% to 4% range, and over the last 20 years, the tax base has grown at about 3.5% per year on average. So this projection uses 4% for 2021, excuse me, 2020, and then 2.5% thereafter. So it's, it's well inside of your historical track record. So in order to kind of judge how well the model is likely to hold up, we try to be as conservative as we can. Here's what it looks like in graphical form. So the tanned bars are the projected millage that is projected to be required for bonds in place, or bonds that were already issued before the new proposal went to the voters. The blue bars represent the estimated millage on the new bonds over time, and the yellow line there represents the annual bond payments. Now, they're very much like a mortgage. You pay a piece of principal every year. You pay a piece of interest, and that determines what your overall payment is. Unlike a mortgage, though, you have the flexibility to structure your payments to match your tax base and things like that, where a mortgage is typically a flat payment. So here's just a little snapshot of kind of how the bonds look in the marketplace. You have the school district right up here, and typically in a bond sale, you have an underwriter or bank is the purchaser of the bonds. But what happens is the bonds are sold to investors. There might be money market funds, insurance companies are big buyers of municipal bonds, individual investors, financial institutions and bond funds are some of the bigger investors. They deliver the bond proceeds to the underwriter of the transaction, who then sends that money up to the school district to be used for your projects. In return, the school district delivers the bond to the various investors. And then you go through a repayment process using a paying agent as the years go on. So that's kind of the, the way that the flow of funds work in the marketplace. I think Tom is going to review some of the participants in the financing process.
So we were talking a little bit at the very beginning as to the different roles that we play as bond counsel and Paul plays as financial advisor. So this, this sheet actually kind of lays it out as to what our roles are in the various bond issues. You can see on the, on the left-hand side here, under municipal advisor, again, obviously, Paul's firm is working very closely with the district, advises on all facets of the structuring. So bond terms, sizing, structure, millage production. You saw that fabulous spreadsheet with all those numbers. We look at it in its simplest form. They're the number guys, we're the lawyers, we're the legal side. So when it comes to documentation, authorization under state law, so drafting resolutions, review of those, providing legal opinions, that's what your bond counsel will do for you. We'll work again very closely with you, understanding what your interests are, what your desire is for what projects you want to finance, making sure that there's state law that authorizes that, and then the form in which that state law provides for us to be able to issue. A major part of the municipal advisor role Paul's firm does is actually puts together a substantial part of the offering document that we sell, that we use to sell the bonds out in the market. Actually have a copy of one of the ones that we did for the refunding bond issue last fall. It's about a 100-page document that we actually, that is utilized in selling the bonds. So if I, if you were an investor, you'd look at this. This is the district's prospectus. So it has all the information that an investor would need to make an informed investment decision. So it describes the bonds themselves, how much, when are they paid, what's the security for the bonds. There's a substantial section and appendix on the school district itself, geographic information about the district, particular information about the school district's tax rates, legal debt margin. All those things are built in there. A copy of the latest audit is part of that, too. So Paul's company helps really put the, a majority of that together, and then we actually will review that, make sure that it satisfies all the legal requirements. Again, your municipal advisor does not actually buy the bonds. That's actually the role, as Paul indicated in that prior slide. You have an investment bank, you have a bank, you have other purchasers that are actually buying the bonds. They're working for you in structuring and providing advice as to the ability to repay those, and work with the rating agencies who will come and actually rate those bonds. We'll document the transaction, and ultimately, what we do is we provide an opinion to the bondholders that says fundamentally that the bonds are legal and valid, binding obligations of the school district, authorized under state law, and that they're exempt from federal and state income tax. So there's a authorization part of our opinion, and there's a tax exemption part of our opinion that they can rely upon in actually claiming the interest, the exemption of the interest. And again, we assist in reviewing the official statement. Your underwriter, your bond underwriter, again, they're the ones that are actually finding the purchasers of the bonds, their own institutional investors or retail investors. So when we select who the bond underwriter is, they're the ones that are ultimately providing the funds for which you're going to utilize to build your projects. And then in turn, we provide the bond to evidence that repayment obligation.
Before you switch, one more really important distinction, and that is that the financial advisor, the municipal advisor works just for you. They owe you a fiduciary duty. An underwriter purchaser does not. And we owe you our client loyalty. We are not going to represent any other party to the transaction, neither is PFM. But an underwriter owes you only a duty of fair dealing, meaning they have to treat you fairly, but they also have to treat their investors fairly. So they do not owe you a fiduciary duty. And, and that is an important, really important... So they do not owe you a fiduciary duty, and that is an important, really important distinction. Of course, there's another type of purchaser we're going to get into in another, with the next slide, where the bank might purchase, or another sophisticated financial institution might purchase the bonds directly, and they don't owe you a duty even of fair dealing. So with that.
So there are a few different ways that you can actually sell or issue your bonds, and talk about each of those here very briefly and contrast them a little bit. You can do a competitive sale of your bond, you can do a negotiated sale of your bond, or you can do private placement, direct placement. The district historically has used a competitive sale process and a negotiated sale process, has not utilized the private placement avenue to sell the debt. So a competitive sale is an offering to essentially any firm in the marketplace. So you set a specific date and time to receive bids, essentially in the form of an interest rate, and any firm that wants to come and present a bid can do so, and the, really the decision of the school district in that case is simply to accept whoever comes in with the lowest interest rate. In a negotiated sale, you predetermine who the underwriter, who the purchaser is going to be, and that buyer then sells those bonds to a variety of different investors, which may include local community investors. One of the things that we can't do with a competitive sale is we can't force or direct the underwriter of the bonds, the purchaser of the bonds, to make any bonds available for purchase in the local community. It's just, you just can't build that feature into the process, whereas in a negotiated sale, you can. For a negotiated sale, the pricing date is flexible, so in the event of a competitive sale, you set a certain date and time. In a negotiated sale, if something's awry in the market and you need to pull back and sell on another day, you can do that. And the sizing of the bonds and the scheduling of the maturities of the principal repayments can be adjusted quite easily with a negotiated sale as well. Commonly used for complex financings, distressed credits, large issuances, or volatile market conditions. Some of those may apply to Dan Arbor, some of them are market-driven. A, I don't believe a final decision has been made on this, at this point, but the direct or private placement is, for this particular financing, not one that we would readily recommend. They tend to, purchasers of private placements tend to like shorter maturities, five, seven, 10-year types of loans as opposed to 20-year loans, and it's not likely, in our opinion, to provide you the best financing terms in the end, so we would not recommend going that way. This is chart that kind of compares the sale methods. Again, many of the reasons that you might go with a direct placement are absent in the current transaction, but a lot of the features of the competitive sale and the negotiated sale are certainly ones that can be accommodated and relate to the kind of bonds that you're selling this time around. And again, the negotiated sale does allow you to sell bonds in your community if you so choose. I think Amanda or Tom's going to go through the process of getting from here to there.
Right. So as you are embarking on the planning, and I think there's been a lot of planning already, there's a lot more to go, for each series of bonds, you need to determine the particular projects that were authorized in the ballot that will be included in that series, and come up with a projected, not the absolute, but the projected draw schedule rate of expenditure of those proceeds, so that we can know that you'll comply with various tax tests and that you're not borrowing money too early and just going to be sitting on it. You need to determine the method of sale, as Paul just described, and at that point, once you know the projects and the draw schedule and know the method of sale, we can put together a bond authorizing resolution. That, again, sets more parameters around the terms of that particular series. There will be a maximum principal amount, maximum interest rate, and it will either appoint an underwriter or authorize a competitive sale through the publication of a notice of sale, authorize all the other filings and documents that need to be prepared to complete the transaction, including a preliminary official statement, as Tom held up earlier, and a final official statement, and otherwise, and then with that, the board would delegate to the administration the authority to complete the transaction for that particular series within the parameters that are established by the board. So those parameters are very important. Once the bond resolution's been adopted, the financial advisor would prepare, and if it's a, they would prepare the entire official statement, preliminary official statement, if it's a competitive sale, and with the underwriter, if it's a negotiated sale, they would together prepare the official statement. And then all of us, the administration, bond counsel, underwriter, financial advisor, get on the phone for a due diligence call to make sure that the official statement is accurate, complete, not misleading, includes all the information necessary to help an investor make an informed decision about whether to buy the bonds and the price at which to buy the bonds. Once there's a draft official statement, the district will apply for ratings, that's something that the financial advisor assists with, and then you're ready to go to market. We post electronically the preliminary official statement, it'll include the ratings in it if they're there, if not, it'll go out on a wire a little bit later. And if it's a competitive sale, there will be a publication of that notice of sale at least a week prior to the sale. And underwriters usually like to post the preliminary official statement at least a week before the sale. And then we're going to have Paul talk a little bit about the credit quality.
Yeah, credit ratings are kind of a funny thing, because what, we're issuing voted unlimited tax bonds that we can go out and levy whatever tax we need to, to make that year's payment. Everybody's credit ought to be about the same, but the credit rating agencies really dive deeply into a lot of various areas that impact eventually the credit standing and allow districts like Dan Arbor to carry a double-A credit standing. Demand analysis is one area. Are you a viable operation that, where your services are in demand? In other words, are you going to maintain enrollments and things like that that are going to make you a viable operation? How well are you doing with your finances? Liquidity? What level of cash do you maintain, which has a lot to do with reserves, maintenance of reserves? Management and governance, they really look closely at not just administration and who's sitting in the chairs, but what kinds of policies and procedures you have put in place over time to essentially institutionalize the way things operate. How large is the debt load? How much is your annual payment relative to your annual budget? And how much is your debt overall as a percentage of your total tax base? Very important calculations they do. And then the actual security provisions for the bonds are a large driver of credit quality. So what's a, what's a bond rating? Essentially, it follows this letter grading category, and here's the three most commonly used rating agencies, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. Triple-A is the top, that's as high as you can go. The investor views, though, anything at this triple-B level or above as being investment grade, and anything below that level as being junk bonds. But a rating essentially is just an opinion of the rating agency, of your ability and likelihood to repay an obligation over time. They look for key points, history of strong management, a diverse economy, sound financial position, including fund balance, reserves, balanced operation, stable enrollment or growing enrollment, and a manageable debt burden. And that includes the debt burden that you have related to the state pension and OPEB liabilities. Just a little bit about, this is one of the sale types, but the processes along the way for several of them are similar. In a negotiated sale, the first step is to hire an underwriter. That can be done through an RFP process or otherwise, communities use a variety of ways to select an underwriter. But the underwriter's responsibility or role in the transaction is to pre-market the bonds, to get investors interested in the transaction ahead of the slated sale date. The municipal advisor and the senior underwriter negotiate the pricing on your behalf. Essentially, we agree upon what market interest rates are on the given sale date. Then that information is released to the market, and that's where all the brokers go to work, calling up their investors and trying to get them to submit orders for the bonds. And the more orders you have for your bonds, the more likely it is that you're going to be able to hit or maybe even improve on those interest rates. Ultimately, depending on the orders received, a final price or interest rate on the transaction is negotiated. But you're not necessarily just dealing with a single underwriter. So there's three different levels. Typically, we see the top two used in most municipal bond transactions, but a senior managing underwriter is engaged, that firm typically runs the transaction, has the day-to-day interface with the school district and your professional team, but there is also co-managers on transaction, particularly sizable transactions, that simply share in the compensation of the transaction, but are another level of brokers that are out there seeking investors for your bonds and trying to bring in orders. Again, if you have multiple firms and a larger group of brokers working the transaction and trying to get orders in for the bonds, the better off you'll be. So we would expect on a sizable transaction to have several co-managers involved in the process.
So after pricing, however you do it, whether it's a competitive sale or a negotiated sale, we prepare an order awarding the sale and on the terms that have been agreed to, either through the competitive sale or through negotiation. And that includes at that time, the actual interest rates and the actual maturity schedule and any other features which might allow you to prepay those, the bonds of that particular series. Also would approve a bond purchase agreement if it's a negotiated sale, and that's a document that is negotiated in advance between the financial advisor, the district and the bond counsel on one side, and the underwriter, and the underwriters' counsel on the other side. And all we have to negotiate at the, on the day of pricing is the final pricing numbers. Everything else is determined upfront. It also spells out the terms under which the underwriter can walk from the transaction, usually very limited, usually things like act of war, or if the district is unable to deliver the, any of the closing documents, including our opinion. So that spells out the documents, the deliverables that have to be provided at closing, and both for the issuer and for the underwriter. It's a longer list for the underwriter, but there are deliverables that the underwriter must provide as well, in addition to the money. The money is always the most key. And at that point, after all those documents are signed, there's a final official statement prepared. The preliminary official statement has some blanks in it, final maturity schedule and the interest rates and whatnot. The final official statement has information that wasn't available prior to pricing, it was supposed to be near final, meaning everything but those final numbers. And then there's usually a couple of weeks between the time of the sale and the date on which the bonds are delivered, just to give everybody time to get those final closing documents prepared and signed, and to get the bonds into the hands of the investors. Then the bonds are delivered, and you deposit the proceeds of the bonds in a special capital projects fund. You have to keep them separate from other district dollars so that you can track the expenditures and make sure that you are spending the money both in accordance with state law and your ballot, but also in accordance with federal tax law. And so we'll talk about, more about that in just a moment. But you're also not done. As Tom indicated, there are obligations that continue. It's not just the very hard work of actually implementing the projects that are part of that bond issue, but you have ongoing tax compliance, continuing disclosure, an obligation to annually update various information that was in the official statement, also an obligation to provide notice on a website maintained by the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board about material events that have come up. And most of those don't have much to do with the school district and are rare. The key ones would be payment defaults and other covenant defaults, but rating changes are one of those. And back in the Great Recession, ratings were changing about every couple of days for a while, and it was very hard to keep up with those material events, but you are, you have an obligation to disclose those and any other financial obligations that you incur that are debt-like, for which you didn't do a public offering. That's a new requirement. And then there's an annual requirement, or a requirement that you audit the use of bond proceeds and send that audit to the state, and you can do that either as part of your annual audit, or you can do it at one time at the very end. We encourage you to do it annually because that gives you an opportunity to catch anything that might have gone off track and fix it before it becomes difficult to do so. One more final note about this federal tax law, because this is very, very important. I already mentioned that you have to match up the useful life of the assets being financed with the term of the bond, so if your bond term is 22 years, it might have an average life of nine or 10 years. The useful life of your, of the assets that you're financing needs to be close to that. Doesn't have to be exactly that, but we pay attention to that. But this is another important one. At the time you issue the bonds, you have to be prepared to do three things. One is One is that you have to reasonably expect that you'll be able to spend at least 85% of the proceeds of that series of bonds, including investment earnings, in three years. There are rare circumstances. If you are building a new school and you can't remodel another school until the new school is finished, then with an architect or engineer certificate, you might be able to extend that to four years and up to five, but never any more than five. And this is another reason to have the multiple series that you're talking about here, because it allows you to stagger those improvements and, as Dr. Swift mentioned, complete them over a much longer period of time and have a much more comprehensive capital improvement plan. You also need to reasonably expect and certify that you will have 5% of the proceeds of a particular series committed, meaning under contract, not spent, within six months after you deliver the bonds. And then you have a general ongoing covenant that you will proceed with diligence to spend the proceeds. So this means really you have to have a very good idea of what you're going, you have to have a plan for how you're going to spend the proceeds, be prepared to do it with diligence, and have a reasonable expectation that you'll spend 85% within three years and be committed to 5% of the proceeds within six months. Now, if facts and circumstances change after that and it takes longer, that's okay, but you would document that. And I guess I can tell you that this is one of the first questions that the IRS asks if they decide to audit your bond issue. There's also a provision that allows you, with a reimbursement resolution, and we build this into all our bond resolutions, that you can seek reimbursement of expenses that you've incurred prior to the issuance of the bonds, as long as you've got this resolution in place, you can, for a period of time, store those up and reimburse from bond proceeds when you have them. Now, the final one is very important, this is ongoing as well, that the IRS confers a special benefit on school districts and municipalities who borrow in the tax-exempt market. They do not want private entities to benefit from the tax-exempt treatment that your bonds get. So you can have a lot of really great ideas about how you can partner with business to improve the educational environment, but you cannot do so in a way that confers private benefit on tax-exempt financed facilities. So with school districts, it can involve, if you've got a nonprofit operating in your building, leasing your building or a part of your building. It can be naming rights at athletic facilities. It can be cell towers on bond-financed property, all those kinds of things. And some of this is counterintuitive and some of these things that you want to do are good ideas. It's just that the IRS doesn't think that way. And so we try to just have your antennae go up and we'll talk about it when these circumstances arise. It also happens when you sell or lease bond-financed property. And it's dizzying, so we'd like to talk about it in the context of specific facts. And then...
So finally, this is our last slide, by the way. We talked a little bit about federal securities laws. So there's two aspects of this. One, when we're initially issuing our bonds, we talked about the official statement, a due diligence call. So again, that book is going to be used to market the bonds to potential investors. So we're including information in there that will provide everything that they need to make an informed investment decision. So what affects investors' decision to buy the bonds and the price at which to buy. So that can be positive information, negative information. That could impact someone's desire to buy the bonds and at what price they're willing to buy the bonds. So our goal is to provide full disclosure. You'd be surprised at how investors react to certain information, so the key is to provide the information and to provide it in a fulsome manner. Again, all the information necessary to inform the investor, it needs to be accurate, not misleading. So we'll spend lots of time going through certain language to make sure that we understand it, so hopefully an investor understands it. We're not omitting anything that's relevant. So you'll see as part of the due diligence process, the underwriters, the investment banks are coming in with due diligence questionnaires. There's 50 questions on these and they're rifling through each one. And one of the final ones is, is there anything that's missing? Are we missing any information that would be relevant to an investor? And we're trying to disclose something that's material, right? So if there are certain minor things that don't raise to a level of materiality, they don't necessarily have to be disclosed, but we'd like to have a discussion as to what we think is material when we go through that process. So when we sell our bonds, we're using that initial book. It's all fresh. But the school district also has the requirement to continue to update that information for the life of the bond issue. So let's just say I bought the bonds five years after they were originally issued. So I wasn't part of the initial bond purchase. These bonds are liquid, they can move amongst investors over time. If I went back and looked at the prospectus, the official statement that was five years ago, that's pretty old information. So a requirement, the SEC has a requirement on the investment banks to say, hey, if you're going to buy bonds, you have to get from the issuer a covenant to update relevant information on an annual basis. So that will include posting your audit annually to this website. Now again, you happen to post your audit in a lot of different places, including the school district's website, the state posts your audit, but another place for the audit to be posted. And what Amanda had talked about, material events and annual updates. So there's this whole section in the official statement that details relevant information about the school district. What's your taxable value? What are your tax rates? Who are your major taxpayers? What's your debt margin? Do you have, what do your negotiations look like? How long are your contracts outstanding for? All those things can have an impact on the financial status of the district. That would be information that would be important to an investor. If I'm buying this five years later, I want to know what's happened in those last four years. So I can go on this website, find the original book, and then I can pull down annually all the updates that you're doing to this section so that when I put those all together, the book's fresh. It has updated information, it has the most recent audits. And it also is a requirement that Amanda talked about. There are certain things that are required to do annually. You file them at the same time that your audit's done. So those table updates get done annually at the same time that your audit's completed. There are other material events that you file within 10 business days of the actual event occurring. And that is because during that time period, bonds can be trading hands and an investor might want to say, hey, something happened and I didn't want to wait till the end of the year to figure that out. For example, if the rating changed. Now, that can be a rating change, positive or negative. That will impact someone's decision to buy the bonds and the price at which they'll buy them. They're really dependent upon the rating. So that's one that really triggers a lot. If we take out existing bonds, like we just did in December, we refunded those prior obligations, that required a material event to be filed. We filed when we closed that bond issue. So if I'm looking on the website, I can see the history of this bond issue, its updates, and any material events that took place throughout the life of that bond issue. So that's an ongoing responsibility until the bonds are paid off. So you layer that on with the tax requirements. There are things to be done and administration needs to know what those responsibilities are. We help them with that. Your financial advisor helps with certain undertakings and so that you're in compliance with the bond issue through its whole life. Oh, forgot about the tax levies. I was, sorry, forgot about this one. So again, we talked already about our debt levy, right? So when we issue our bonds, we have the ability to levy the tax to support that. The school district has a split levy. They levy July 1 and December 1. And as Mario said, indicated very early on, if we're going to levy July 1, you have to actually have bonds delivered prior to the levy, so June 30th, because you can't levy a tax for an issue that doesn't actually exist just yet. We haven't actually issued the bond. So we wouldn't know what that dollar amount is yet because we wouldn't have actually delivered our bonds. Our payments are due principal and interest. We're going to pay May 1 and then interest only on November. So you pay interest semi-annually and principal just once a year in May. So that'll be set out in our bond resolution and the official statement as to how that's structured. So again, very standard, we're going to have, because we will have collected July and December, so our big payment's going to be May 1. We'll have the two collections to support that. And then just interest only in November, which will just be based off of the one tax levy then. Paul, do you want to talk a little bit about the table or about how we're levying the calculations?
Yeah. I won't go back to the table. I assume that most have a notion as to how the tax levy's calculated, but it's really one that works in reverse. We don't take a millage rate, multiply it times the tax base and figure out how many dollars it will produce. It goes the other way around. So we know what our annual bond obligation, how much revenue we have to generate, and we know what the size of the tax base is. So we divide the amount of revenue needed into the size of the tax base that year. It tells us what that millage rate is for the year and that's what you consider when you do your tax rate request each year. I think that wraps it up for us unless we can answer any questions. We'd be glad to.
Trustee, do you have any questions? Trustee Baskett.
Thank you. Over the years, we've gotten to know each other very well and I appreciate it and it never gets dull, just seems not always as clear. So appreciate the update. My question is more on a broader scale. As I've mentioned, we've been working together over the years, but our district's been talking about seeing things in equitable lenses, if you will. Mr. Stoddard, you mentioned that in hiring underwriters, some communities do RFPs and a variety of ways to hire them. And I know with RFPs, there is very strict guidelines, of course, but somehow, is there a way to be more inclusive or to cast the net broader so that we can get more people working on this from your perspective, the financial background? You know, we get a lot of hits regarding the construction and the labor, but I'm, again, looking at an equitable lens of everybody having a potential share of this work. From the financial side of it, is there a way to be more inclusive in getting people who look maybe more like me and more women? You know, Ms. Van Dusen, you've been our woman for a long time.
You certainly can. In the, well, I'll tell you, some districts, some issuers of municipal bonds have, you know, regular relationships with firms that they like to use and know and trust and go about a selection in that manner. You can also use an RFP process to make it as broad and as inclusive as you feel is appropriate. You know, those expectations can be elaborated in an RFP process and you can certainly take those things into account as you review and make decisions on who you want to employ.
I know in the past, when I've done account work, companies have often said they'd like to see their account teams be diverse, if you will. Is that something we can do? Of course, we've got our legal counsel here who always counsels me about being legal. But, you know, again, I was very interested when you said using a variety of ways. So we don't have to do an RFP? Help me understand.
Well, we sometimes are told by an insurer who it is that they want to use as an underwriter or an underwriting team. And then they charge us with, you know, determining things like compensation and what's appropriate for those kinds of issues when you do hire somebody and to help you to make those decisions.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Ms. Van Dusen?
I'd just like to add that there are two factors here, and obviously, inclusion and equity are very important. I appreciate that. I have always appreciated that myself. You also want to make sure that, and there are firms, an increasing number of firms in the market who are very capable and can deliver on the bond issue. You want both to make sure that your teams are representative of the community and reflect back, but also that they have capacity to bring the best transaction to the district. And those are both legitimate concerns. So it's just you can't lose sight of that. There are also, I want to mention, there are securities rules that require that any underwriting firms, because obviously Ann Arbor is getting a lot of attention, who are tempted to come approach board members and the administration, and there are rules on how they may go about that. If they want to pitch your deal, they have to, knowing that you have a financial advisor, also provide any information they provide. They have to be invited to provide you with that information. They have to be invited by the district, but they must also provide anything they provide to you to the financial advisor.
Sure.
I believe, Mr. Demetrius.
I was just going to say that the school district is the one that decides who the underwriters will be. And traditionally, we have used both the competitive sale and the negotiated sale. So specifically in the negotiated sale, we always include a firm that is, I would call a minority firm. And we have, you know, some of the criteria that was mentioned, but also we look at pricing and what are we going to be charged? So all those components decide who we actually, you know, there's a lot of things to look at. How big it is, you know, the issue that we have, if we're going to use just one underwriter, sometimes we use two, sometimes we use three. So there's a lot of factors that we consider.
Thank you.
Trustee Lazarus.
Thank you. Thank you for all this information. My head's spinning. I'll probably have more questions later, but a couple of them stand out, just piggybacking on the question of the bond sale method. Between the competitive sale and the negotiation sale, other than that, the positive point of the negotiated sale is that we can submit bonds to local entities, right? Correct? And the competitive, you cannot. You can't specify that, but they could purchase them correctly?
It's correct. You don't have the ability to influence that in a competitive sale. It's unlikely that an Ann Arbor firm is going to purchase the bonds in a competitive sale and then distribute to local investors. It's possible, but you can't direct them to do so.
What are the negatives of a negotiated sale? Are there any negatives to it compared to the other models?
Well, negatives for a negotiated sale.
Yeah, for a negotiated sale. Is there any pitfalls we need to be aware of?
You know, some say, you know, an appearance of favoritism, for instance, to a particular firm. You know, many entities would use an RFP process to determine who that firm or firms is going to be. So you have a way to neutralize that particular argument. The other is, you know, one of price. In a competitive sale on a given date and time, you might receive a half a dozen different offers to buy your bonds and they all come in at a different interest rate. You know, your interest, biggest interest in a transaction like that is to bring it in at the lowest interest rate for the benefit of your taxpayers. If you do a negotiated sale, you're essentially negotiating one-on-one with an investor, with a purchaser of the bonds. And you don't have certainty that it's, you know, absolutely the lowest interest rate on that given date and time. Your financial... Your financial advisor, in the context of a negotiated sale, will do an analysis and negotiate on your behalf. And needs to be comfortable, as you do, that you got the right price. And, you know, we would do that on your behalf. So that's, that's kind of the protection, I guess, that you have to be comfortable that you've got the best deal that you, that you could on that day.
How long is that process of the negotiations? Because interest rates change, the market situation change. How long, is it a short period? Is it a?
Well, it, it takes, it takes about a week, I would say.
Oh, so it's short.
Once, once the credit ratings determine, the basic structure of the issue is determined, the transaction is analyzed by our team that is in the marketplace all the time, as well as by the underwriter. And both, you know, make a determination as to where they think that rate should be, where that price should be. And then, once there is preliminary agreement, then it's the underwriter's job to go out and pitch it to investors. So that when the sale date comes about that week later, there's a, already been a meeting of the minds, the underwriter's been comfortable in showing levels, interest rate amounts to investors. And by that time, you should be able to execute a very effective transaction.
Are the fees also negotiable? With the underwriters?
If you do an RFP process, typically, you would, you would seek fees as one of the, one of the primary measures. In absent an RFP process, certainly you can negotiate the fees.
Okay. I have a couple other questions. When, since we have to issue them based on use, life usefulness, this series, and we've got four that we've projected that we want to actually submit or issue. If we do like a bus, which has a certain useful life, and technology, which has a shorter useful life, and construction, how do we, how do we organize that? Are they just itemized within that series of bonds? Or are they, so it's one series of bonds for a certain, like 140 million, but we have, we show that this portion goes to technology? And then it's only gets paid over a certain amount of time?
Very much so. But Amanda can give you a little bit more detail on that.
You average everything out. So it's weighted average maturity and weighted average life. And there are, the state assigns useful lives to different kinds of assets. So they say a bus is six years, even though you might use it for longer than that. And it's from the date that it's placed in service, technology also. So then you average all of these things out. And I want to, there's something else that, that we should keep in mind. You have to have a plan at the time you issue the bonds for how you're going to spend those proceeds. But you have four, you could have more series of bonds. And over time, the, your plan, you're going to get better ideas, you're going to encounter a few obstacles, you're going to shift things around. Within these, as however many series you end up with, with this bond proposal, you can do some shifting back and forth even after you issue the bonds. And you're starting out with a budget, a good faith estimate of what these projects are going to cost. Some are going to be higher, some are going to be lower, for all kinds of reasons. And, and so there is shifting that goes on over the course of implementation. But you do need to keep track of how you're spending the money because you can't decide all of a sudden to move all the buses or all the technology into one particular issue because that's going to end up being a short issue. You do want to, you'll have an array. You'll have longer life construction improvements and a mix with bonds and instruments, with, with buses and instruments and technology.
So since we have to have, since we have a plan, hopefully we'll have a plan.
Yeah.
The 85%, that the 5% that we have to spend within the six months or commit
Commit.
Within the six, for six months, is that a part of the 85% total?
Yes, it is, it's part of the 85%. No, actually, the commitment and then 85% is in expenditure. So you, the 5% is-
85%.
Yes, and actually spend it.
Okay. Then the 15% that's left over, is that, is there a timeline on that amount also?
There, no. Obviously, that becomes subject to the diligence factor, those three factors. A reasonable expectation that you'll be spending 85% within the three years. But expectations, facts and circumstances can change. The biggest example I've got is at Metro Airport, we were partway through implementing a bond issue when the two major airlines at the airport merged and that put everything on pause. And it changed how they were going to configure the improvements at the airport. It took 10 years to spend those proceeds. But, and in one case, there was a school district client that started to do a renovation at a school and discovered that one of the walls was getting ready to fall down. And the building envelope was not in good shape. They put it on pause, figured it out. But that's an after-arrising circumstance. It's just, you have to know enough at the time you issue the bonds to reasonably expect you're going to do it. And then if things change, that's not a big deal. But the 5% commitment is to show you're not issuing bonds too early. You're not going to just borrow money and then sit on the money for a year. You're, you're moving forward. The 85% is another part of that. And then moving with diligence, which is the key thing. Even when facts and circumstances change, you, you need to be, not foolishly, not imprudently, but diligently. And here's another example. Groseal Schools, a few years ago, voted bond issue, issued the bonds, and then they shut down the bridge connecting Groseal to the mainland. And they changed the weight limits. And contractors were not agreeing to work on the school projects because of those limits. It was going to cost them too much money. That's a totally legitimate reason to put those projects on hold until this situation is rectified.
And I have one other question. Can you elaborate a little bit more on the private use restrictions? Like if we had a build, for example, if we had a building that was a school building, but we were leasing a space to a public entity or a nonprofit entity, and we were gaining revenue through lease payments?
Right.
Is, does that fall? I mean, we're not renovating a build.
If, if there are outstanding bonds, which were used to improve that building, and this is where all of these questions, that you're asking a good question, but it depends on where the bond proceeds were spent. Was it, were they spent in that part of the building? Or was it the heating and cooling system, which benefits the entire building? And, and how much of the building does that, would that private use be? And by the way, if it's a lease to a governmental entity, it doesn't matter. Governmental entities are fine.
Oh.
Doesn't count. But if it's a lease to a preschool or to another type of private entity, then you have to do some calculations to figure out, is it more? If it's an educational purpose, you can have, any series of bonds can have private use up to 10% of that issue. If it's not an educational purpose, then it can be up to 5%. But you have to then have a catalog of the private uses across the district and the way that that particular bond issue was spent. So it's series by series. It can become, if you were dizzy by this earlier presentation, I'd tell you, in the absence of specific facts, this can be particularly dizzy.
If we had specifics, then we could sit down and figure out-
Then we can sit down and-
Is it a viable option? Or would it not be a viable option?
Right, right.
Okay.
And if, if you're selling, and, and the bonds have to still be outstanding that were used to improve the building because once the bonds are paid off, you don't have to worry about that at all.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
Trustee Kelly?
Thank you. I think I'm going to, I have, I have a few questions. So I appreciate you being here to, to help me through this. I think I'm going to pick up where trustee Lazarus left off there on, on slide 21. What happens if we don't use it fast enough, even with the possible extensions? Is it a use it or lose it? Do we incur a penalty? What happens?
Again, it's an expectation at the time you issue the bonds. And so as long as you had a reasonable expectation at the time that you issue the bonds, then if something changes, so it takes longer, and, and your original expectation was still reasonable, you can, you can keep spending for as long as it takes, as long as you are proceeding with diligence. But here's the one thing that happens. After the third anniversary, after the issuance of the bonds, if you are so lucky as to be making more money on the investment of the unspent proceeds than you are paying in interest, then you either have to restrict yield or rebate the excess earnings to the federal government. They don't want you making a profit on that money. Now, this has not been a common occurrence for the last several years in, with low interest rates, but it could happen. And, but people look upon arbitrage as a horrible thing. And the rebate is something to avoid at all costs. And it is a pain to run those calculations. But the truth of the matter is, if you are earning enough to have arbitrage profit, that means that you are earning and keeping as much as you possibly can. You're not leaving anything on the table. But that third year anniversary is, it's, that's the main consequence.
Okay. And you got to a different question I was going to have, which sounds like a good problem to have. When we get the proceeds from a sale, we can put them in an interest-bearing or-
There are-
While we're working on spending them, we can make money on that.
You can. And you, you, I think the prudent thing is to invest that money. It's the same restrictions that apply to the investment of your general funds. But you want to make sure that you ladder, it's another reason to have a draw schedule, that you ladder those investments so that they're liquid when you need them to be. It's been a problem sometimes when people have invested too long. Or, or, and you don't want to invest too light. There's, and it's a constant adjustment that you'll be wanting to make.
Got it, thank you. And then the last question I had with slide 21, you mentioned reimbursement. How far back into our history can we look for that?
Well, not that far back. The, the, you can go back 60 days prior to the adoption of your reimbursement resolution. And then there's a limit, how long is it, 18 months? After an improvement is placed in service or a bus is placed in service. So there's a, definitely a limit. And there's, there's an old story that the IRS said, no, if you can go back indefinitely, then we could be refinancing the pyramids. But, but you, this is just, and not all districts have the luxury of having resources they could spend upfront. But, and this limitation, by the way, doesn't apply to soft costs. So architects, construction managers, inspections, permits, that kind of thing that are, where you've incurred expenditures prior to the delivery of the bonds, you don't have a limit on those.
Great, thank you. Slide 12. I know there were some other questions here already too about the types of methods of sales. The part about includes local citizens made me wonder if there's ever been a model where a group of local citizens have gotten together and done like a cooperative investment organization? And I'm thinking it's like the grandest, you know, brick sale in all of history, where, where your local citizens, literally just regular families, band together to become investors in the district in this way.
I have not seen it, don't know if you guys have.
I have, but you don't want to do it.
Okay. That's all I needed to hear.
There's a couple of ideas that have been used in the, in the past is, municipal bonds are tax-free, you know, tax-free income to the investor. And typically, the, the model of, of the investor that desires or needs tax-exempt income is one that, that has a higher income level. So the, the tax-exempt feature of municipal bonds is, is not typically in high demand for, you know, families that, that aren't at the highest of the income levels. So because of that, those, those kinds of efforts, while talked about and sometimes promoted, don't typically, you know, have, have a lot of use in the marketplace.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And perhaps families may find better rates even doing other types of investment than getting involved in something like this to-
Well, they can, but oddly enough, we're at a pretty unique point in time where taxable returns, taxable investments are not producing too much different a return as tax exempt. So there, there is, at least in the current marketplace, a little more incentive for that type of investment to be made. But if, I, I think that the, the person that, that, you know, just wants the smallest denomination bond is, is probably just as interested in saying, hey, I, I have an Ann Arbor School District investment here, as opposed to, you know, the, the 1% return that they're going to, to make on it.
Right, okay, thank you. I have a question about the technology piece. I started wondering around slide six. With computers, you know, we, we do have technology in this district, and we do like to refresh that technology as it's needed so that our staff and students have appropriate performance. But the language here makes me a little nervous about, no upgrades.
That's a semantic thing.
Okay, we can refresh our computers.
So, you know, when you, you, when we, it'll, it's fine to replace computers and peripherals and other devices, tablets. It is not okay to put new hard drives in it.
Okay.
So, and these limitations, thank you, Paul. These limitations apply to the devices that students use. So administrative technology is not subject to these limitations, the servers are not. But, and this is just a function of our legislature in Michigan. This is not true if you're a university or other types of governmental borrowers. They are not subject to this limitation. It's just that at one point, one legislator decided that districts were financing five-year-life technology over 30 years. And, and here we are. But, but so you can replace and refresh, and you've been doing that. And this has been structured so that you can continue to do that. It's just that you have to be very careful that you do not spec the application software when you buy the hardware. And you're not going to be doing the maintenance on it. You're not going to be doing supplies. But you aren't, and you're not going to be doing, if there's a separate charge for it, the separate charge for upgrades and software that you can buy, and hardware upgrades that you can. So it's just, you know, a lot of the time, people use the word repair to describe a full spectrum of improvements, some of which are capital and some of which are not. The upgrade gets used that same way. And it's, it's really the tinkering with the same machine, it's not okay. The replacement's fine.
I appreciate that, that's reassuring, thank you. I have tremendous faith in our team. I'm not asking my next question in regard to what should our administrative team, our, our staff do? I'm asking, my question in terms of the seven of us, what are our do's and don'ts? What are the pitfalls we could fall into as trustees that we need to be aware of?
Don't all step up at once.
Well, I'm just thinking, you're undoubtedly going to be approached by underwriters. And I think that's why I mentioned those securities rules about not pitching anything specific unless they've been invited to by the district. And also making sure that when they do pitch something by invitation, that they are also providing that information, the same information, to the financial advisor.
Okay.
So that's one. And then, other than that, I think being conscious of these disclosure obligations, which apply to the board as well as the administration. So when you see the preliminary official statement, we hope you'll read it. And another thing, and I don't think this board will hold back on this at all, is that nothing is worse than undertaking a transaction that you don't feel comfortable with or that you do not feel you understand. It's the job of your team and the administration to make you feel comfortable, understand any risks you're taking, and helping you understand the transactions that you're doing.
Okay.
To me, that's the most important thing.
I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You want to... So the benefit of going last is, a lot of my questions were answered either in your presentation or through other trustees' questions. I did have a couple pretty brief questions. One is on Slide 7, where you have the ballot proposal information. I do... I recall Ms. Van Duzen said something about land. And as I looked at this, I was looking for the word "land," which I didn't see, and I didn't know if I was missing that.
Well, it's not there as land, because we use the school code world, like a school code word, which is sites. So if you look at the last bullet point, it says acquiring, improving, and developing sites.
Right.
And you are definitely... We knew that was a very important purpose to have.
And I actually had that highlighted as well, because I thought that's what it meant. But I know that sometimes we get into this, we get questions about that later on.
Very fair.
So if in 10 years, we wanted to buy some land, that's actually a site, which was approved.
Well, and I should mention, too, we also have the possibility, just in case, because again, this is a proposal that is going to span a long period of time. We have the authority for you to acquire buildings if you found one that existed already. And we also have a possibility of constructing. You knew that we were having the possibility of constructing buildings, but then we also have additions. So we have the spectrum of things that you can do with respect to construction.
Great. Thank you. My second question is around the prospectus and the credit rating and the bond attractiveness based on our district's performance. And I think it was on Slide 16, where we talked about fund balance and some other issues that could impact our credit rating. Can you speak to... If our fund balance were to get too low and impact our credit rating, how does that actually impact our ability to finance further construction? How does that... And then also, how does that impact the citizens in terms of what they're paying in millage or additional tax?
Right. So if conditions are such that the credit rating were lowered or downgraded, and one of those factors or causes might be drawing down on reserves and not maintaining the fund equity, the consequence of that happening would be that the interest rate that you would pay in any given market would be higher.
Okay.
If the rating drops one notch, one level, not several levels down, the cost of that in an interest rate differential might be a tenth of a percent, might be a quarter of a percent at most. Most of the projections that we have are of a nature that would allow you to deal with that kind of an adjustment. But ultimately, you're right. The taxpayer will pay the additional interest expense.
Okay. And I think all my questions... Actually, this is one, it might be for our team, so the appropriate person can answer it. On Slide 23, we say that we must deliver bonds before June 30th for July 1st levy. We also said that we're going to take a year-long kind of planning process in order to know exactly what we're going to do. But we have to start committing some of that funding. We also, in one of... In our projections, we talked about the years 1 through 6. So I'm assuming that a lot of these things, such as solar power, LED lighting and such, would be what we would be paying for, which we have a reasonable understanding that we need in the very short term. Is that correct?
That's exactly right. So the requirement for us to... This will be the lay explanation. Don't move too far, Mr. Dimitri, because he'll be there for the technical explanation. But the sale by June 30th is the piece that makes our levy what we said it would be. So that's why in my introduction, I talked about building a new campus as a staging facility, keeping the promises of year 1 through 6, which is really years 2 through 7 of this 2019 bond. We already kind of know the cornerstones of that 140 million. But we will take March through June with the trustees and with our experts to just make certain. So, Mr. Dimitri, that's the lay, general explanation. Do you want to add any more to that?
I don't think so. I think you did a pretty good job. So we have been working in the background and looking at a variety of scenarios. How do we go about doing this work? And, you know, things that make sense. And like Dr. Swift said, we'll be discussing those options and plans and see which way you're going to go. But probably towards the end of May, we'll... Before that, probably middle of May, we need to have everything for the $140 million. And we do know, you know, that we've already said that we needed sites to move students in, so those are going to be built in. You know, that's the first things that we need to do. Make sure that we have places to take students in order to work on the schools. And there's, you know, a variety of things that we can do while school is in session, things that we can't have to wait till summertime. So there's a lot of things that are at play trying to figure all this out.
Thank you.
Thank you.